Can I get a roll call, please? Chairperson Woods.
Present.
Vice Chair Oberg.
Present.
Commissioner Russell.
I'm here.
Commissioner Bowman is excused. Commissioner Case.
Present.
Commissioner Collins, I'm sorry.
I'm here.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Here.
We have a quorum. Can we stand for the pledge?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public where it stands, one nation, under God, in the invisible world with liberty and justice for all.
So, welcome, everyone, to the February 17th, 2022 Clean City Commission meeting. And listed first is our approval of minutes, consideration of the January 20th, 2022, regular meeting minutes for approval as written or with noted corrections.
Make a motion that we accept the minutes as written.
I second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes. Listed second, consideration of public comments. Those wishing to address the Clean City Commission need not request permission in advance. Action taken as a result of public comments will be limited to directing staff to study the matter or rescheduling the matter for consideration and decision at a later time pursuant to ARS 38-431 at all. Donna, do we have any public comments? Anyone in the meeting hall? Okay, we'll move on. Next is reports, A, annual open meeting law training. The city clerk's office will present open meeting law training, including parliamentary procedures and some information concerning the duties and responsibilities of the Clean City Commission.
Good afternoon, Chair Woods and Commissioner. My name is Tanya Ferguson. I'm the deputy city clerk. I work with Annie Meredith, which you most of have met. She's the city clerk. I'm going to be giving you open meeting law today. We know that everybody appreciates it, so we're going to be trying to make this as fast as possible. General provisions. It is the public policy of the state that the meetings of this public body be conducted openly and that notices and agendas be provided for such meetings which contain such information as it's reasonable necessary to inform the public of the matters to be discussed or decided. Towards this end, any person or entity charged with the interpretations of this law shall construe any provisions of this law in favor of open and public meeting. General provisions. All meetings of any public body shall be public meetings and all persons so desiring shall be permitted to attend and listen to deliberations and proceedings. What does that mean? The public's business must be conducted in the public. Why open meeting law matters? It protects the public and preserves the rights to participate in the government. It protects public officials and maintains integrity of government, ensures a better informed citizenry, and builds trust between the government and citizenry. Who must comply with open meeting law? You. Public body is defined as the legislator, all boards and commissions of the state and political subdivisions, all standing special or advisory committees, or subcommittees appointed by the public body. This includes quasi-jurisdiction judicial, excuse me, bodies. Subcommittees are any entities, however designated, that is officially established on motion and order of a public body and whose members have been appointed for a specific purpose of making a recommendation concerning decisions to be made or considered, or course of conduct to be taken or considered by the public body. What constitutes a meeting? The gathering in person or through technological devices of a quorum of the members of a public body of which they discuss, propose or take action, include any deliberations by a quorum with respect to such action. A quorum is defined as a majority of the members of a board or commission. Vacant positions do not reduce the quorum requirement. What constitutes a meeting? Technological devices included email, website, blogs, Facebook, Twitter, LinkedIn, Snapchat, Instagram, texting, any similar technology. Elected officials should refrain from sending emails or other electronic communications to a quorum of the members of the public body in order to avoid serial meetings. Don't propose legal action to any members electronically. Refrain from using electronic communications to discuss with members matters likely to come before the public body for action. Splintering of the quorum. A meeting must occur also, I'm sorry, a meeting may also occur when less than a quorum of the public body discusses a matter of city business and one or more members later discusses the matter with another member of the public body. Informing the public. No meeting may take place less than 24 hours' notice to the general public, each member of the public body. Agendas must include notice of the date, time, location of the meeting, an agenda, specific matters to be discussed, considered, or decided at the meeting, must contain such information as it's reasonably necessary to inform the public of the matters to be discussed or decided. The other matters must, in some reasonable matter, be related to an item specifically listed on the agenda. Other items specifically listed on the agenda or matters related thereto may be discussed, considered, or decided. If it's not on the agenda, it cannot be discussed. If a matter not specifically listed on the agenda is brought up during a meeting, the better practice or, I'm sorry, and one to minimize subsequent litigation is to defer discussion and decision on the matter until a later meeting, when it can properly be listed on the agenda. If action is taken on an item not properly noticed on the agenda, then the particular action violates open meeting law and it's null and void. Call to the public. An open call to the public is an agenda item that allows the public to address the public body on topics of concern within the public's body jurisdiction, even though the topic is not specifically listed on the agenda. These are not required by state statute. They may impose a reasonable time limit on the speaker. Call to the public. As a public body, you have four options during call to the public. Respond to criticism after the close of the call to the public. Ask staff to review the item. Ask that a matter be placed on a future agenda so it can be discussed. Sit in silence. Call to the public is only permitted if it is specifically listed on the agenda. The public's rights. They have the right to attend, listen, tape record, or videotape. The public does not have right to speak or disrupt, except during a designated call to the public or a public hearing. Sanctions for violation. If a public officer knowingly violates open meeting law, the court may impose a civil penalty. This penalty also can be imposed against each person who knowingly aids, agrees to aid, or attempts to aid in violating open meeting law. If a public officer knowingly violates the law within the intent to deprive the public of the information, the public officer may be removed from the office and ordered to pay attorney's fees. All legal action done by any public body during a meeting held in violation is null and void. It is illegal to fail to declare a conflict of interest under Arizona law or to participate otherwise, be involved in discussion on issues or contracts where such conflict exists. This covers all public officers and employees of the incorporated cities and towns. This also applies to private interest of public officials or employees' relatives. Find out ahead of time what conflicts are. In general, a conflict of interest will result in an officer or an employee of a city or town, or relative of an officer or employees involved in a substantial ownership or salaried employment with a private corporation during business with the city. A public officer or employee may sell equipment, materials, supplies, or services to the municipality only after public competitive bidding. Remote interests are so minor that you do not constitute illegal conflicts of interest. If you have only a remote interest in a matter before the public body, then you can vote and participate in this discussion. See Arizona Revised Statute 38-431, or Statute 38-431.09, and Statute 38-509, or Statute 50, or, sorry, excuse me, 38-511. Do you have any questions regarding open meeting law or conflicts of interest? Please feel free to contact the city clerk's office or the city attorney's office.
There's just a couple of things that I want to highlight that I like to give a little bit more emphasis on. When it comes to violating the quorum, a lot of times people ask, well, what if we are doing a community event, or we happen to be out in the public together? The city clerk's office posts a general courtesy posting for our council and our boards and commissions that cover any special events or anything like that, to let the public know that you could potentially be in the same place together, but outside of a meeting, no official business will be discussed and no decisions will be made. And then we just expect that, as the public body, you guys just respect those rules and make sure that any business is brought back to the meeting. The other thing that I wanted to emphasize is that when there is an open meeting violation, it is on you as an individual. It is not the commission that pays that fine. It is you as an individual. The city doesn't cover that. So I always like to just make sure that you know that it's you personally that's responsible. And then if you guys had any questions, we're happy to answer any of those before Tanya moves on to your next one.
Does anyone have any questions? No? Okay, thank you.
What is parliamentary procedure? What is a parliamentary procedure? It is a set rule, set of rules for conduct at meetings that allows everyone to be heard and to make decisions without confusion. Why is it important? Because it is a, I'm sorry, because it's a time-testing method of conducting business at meetings and public gatherings. If you, if it can be adapted to fit the needs of any organizations, it's important that everyone know that these basic rules. Typical meeting order. Called order, roll call, pledge of allegiance, approval of meetings, awards and recognition, call to the public, old business, new business, reports by staff, announcement by commission or staff liaison, and adjournment. A motion is a proposal that the entire membership take action or stand on any issue. Motions are how members express themselves. There are three basic types of motions that you will use. Main motions. The purpose of a main motion is to introduce items to the membership of their consideration. They cannot be made with any other motion, when any other motion is on the floor, and yield to privileged or subsidiary and incidental motions. Subsidiary motions, their purpose is to change or affect how a main motion is handled, and it is voted on before a main motion. Incidental motions, their purpose is to provide a means of questioning procedure concerning other motions and must be considered before the other motion. Life of a motion. To make the motion, second on the motion, debate the motion, which is a discussion, and vote on the motion. Obtaining the floor. Wait until the last speaker has finished. Address the chairman by addressing, by saying, Mr. Chairman or Mrs. Chairman. Wait until the chairman recognizes you. Make the motion. Speak in a clear, concise manner. Always state a motion affirmatively. Say, "I move that we," or rather than, "I move that we do not." Avoid personalities and stay on their subject, on your subject, sorry. Wait for someone to second the motion. Another member will second the motion, or the chairman will call for a second. If there is no second to your motion, it is lost. The chairman states your motion. The chairman will say it has been moved or seconded, that we thus placing your motion before the membership for the consideration and action. This member, the membership then either debates your motion or may move directly to a vote. Once your motion is presented to the membership by the chairman, it becomes assembly proper, property, and cannot be changed by you without the consent of the members. Expanding on your motion. The time for you to speak in favor of your motion is at this point in time, rather than at the time you present it. The mover is always allowed to speak first. All comments and debate must be directed to the chairman. Keep to the time limit for speaking. That has been established. The mover may speak again only after other speakers have finished, unless called upon the chairman. Putting the question to the membership. The chairman asks, are you ready to vote on the question? If there is no more discussion, a vote is taken. Only a motion to move the previous question may be adapted. By votes, by voice, I'm sorry. The chairman asks those in favor to say aye, those opposed to say nay. Any member may move for an exact count. By roll call, each member answers yes or no as his name is called. This method is used when a record of each person's vote is required. By division, this is a slight verification of a voice vote. It does not require a count unless the chairman so desires. Members raise their hand or stand. There are two other motions that are commonly used that relate to voting. Motion to the table. This motion is often used to attempt to kill a motion. The option is always present, however, to take from the table for consideration by the membership. Motion to postpone indefinitely. This is often used as a member, as a means of parliamentary strategy and allows opponents of motion to test their strength without any actual vote being taken. Also, debate is once again open on the main motion. Parliamentary procedure is the best way to get things done at your meetings, but it only works if you use it properly. Always, all allow motions that are in order. Have members obtain the floor properly. Speak clearly and concisely. Allow, obey the rules of debate. Most importantly, be courteous. Any questions?
Any questions? No, thank you very much. You're welcome. Okay, on to old business, listed under A. We are going over the event calendar. Monthly update of the Clean City Commission calendar. Discussion, possible action regarding any new or rescheduled upcoming events.
Chair, vice chair, members of the commission. This is a regular item on our agenda, the event calendar. We do have a new event for consideration this month. We were approached by the Surbeck Garden Club regarding their planned Arbor Day event. That would be scheduled for April 30th. And I believe we have a representative from the garden club here. If you'd like to approach the diocese and address the commission.
I'm Sandy Womack with Surbeck Garden Club, and we have worked with Clean City Commission for a number of years. We've been doing Arbor Day in Kingman as a garden club since 2008. Arbor Day has been going on in Kingman since 2002 with Nina Brackett leading before that. And in the past, working with you, we have actually had you provide the trees to be planted in a community area. The last number of years, they've been in a city park. We have planted trees at the train depot and at the airway underpass, at schools, but the parks department chooses where they think the trees are needed. And the last time we had Arbor Day was in 2019, because the last two years it was canceled. And at that time, we planted trees in Fireman's Park, Firefighters Park, and the year before that, they were in Cecil Davis Park. I know a lady from Diggett Community Garden that works with the children has requested to have trees planted in Cecil Davis Park, but that's up to the Parks Department. We just request your working with us on this project. Any questions?
Any questions, commissioners? No?
No.
Thank you.
Chair, vice chair, members of the commission. Yeah, so if you want to, if you were to direct us to coordinate, we will coordinate with Diggett and Surbeck Garden Club and the Parks Department to set up an event for April 30th.
Do we, do we, when I say we, I mean, does the Public Works buy the trees for Arbor Day? Or who, who actually, are they donating?
We've purchased trees in the past.
You've purchased trees.
And we can do that again this year.
Do you know what the quantity normally is?
Seems like we've done five or six, depending on the year.
Usually.
Yeah, I guess I haven't checked the tree prices lately. I don't know if there's supply chain issues with those or not.
Is it possible we can contact the community, see if there's any growers out there that may want to donate some?
Well, we could. I don't have any contact information for growers, but I mean, we generally will buy them. In the past, we've bought them from a local landscape supply company, and at times in the past, they've furnished a couple extra for us.
Whatever you plant, you want to make sure it's healthy, not root bound, that kind of thing. Yeah. And the variety of tree also makes a big difference down the road.
Yeah, generally, we defer to the Parks Department on types of, types of trees.
I would imagine that, we asked the lady that just did the presentation, do you automatically, do you contact nurseries and stuff to help donate trees also?
That's why I'm here tonight. When we work with the city and the parks and with your commission, then we coordinate a poster contest with fifth graders in all the schools, and each student who participates gets their own tree sapling, and we purchase those. So we purchase about 350 tree saplings to give out each year, and then the city or parks or Clean City Commission buys the four, or five, or six trees that are planted in a public location. That's, that's been the history.
Great. Thank you.
So I will entertain a motion?
Yeah, I make a motion that Rob moves forward with Parks and Recreation to look into purchasing a handful of trees, five or six trees for Arbor Day.
I'll second that motion.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Next, listed under old business B, is our community outreach and education. Regular monthly update regarding community outreach and education. Discussion and possible action regarding any new presentation topics for future meetings.
Chair, vice chair, members of the commission. So this month, we had our open meeting law training. We are working with the, with Mojave County for the May meeting, or I'm sorry, the March meeting, to have them do a little presentation on their hazardous waste cleanup that they have scheduled for April. We have some other, Donna's included a spreadsheet with some other future presentation items, but as always, if you have any suggestions or know of anything else that would be good for a little bit of community outreach as part of the commission's goals, then please, please let us know of those. But as of right now, we've got, we'll be working to set up the hazardous waste collection presentation for the March meeting.
Anything anybody would like to add, commissioners? Okay. We'll go on to old business C, is the community recognition program, and this is regarding monthly update regarding the community recognition program. This item is for information only.
And commissioners, I would defer to Mr., or Commissioner, or Vice Chair Oberg, I apologize, for an update on this, on this program, since he's kind of taken the lead on this program.
Okay, just a quick update. We have three applications in right now. The plaques will be ready tomorrow. And I understand there's two new applications that have been presented, and I'll pick those up from Donna tomorrow also. And that's about it right now. Other than that, once I get the plaques tomorrow and I have them in my hands, I'll get with Rob, and we'll start reaching out to put together where we're going to meet, how we're going to do the presentation, and then Donna will let everybody know.
Any other discussion? Okay, moving on to item D, under old business, service to the community program. Discussion and possible action regarding the service to the community program.
Chair, vice chair, members of the commission. Last month, we had included a draft brochure. We're still operating with the service to the community program name, but if anyone has any jazzier names, we'd definitely be interested. Donna's developed a list of service organizations and churches, but I guess we would ask for any help that you could provide on people you know, any other service organizations or, or churches that we could start scheduling presentations to. You know, we've still got a little bit to do. We've got to put together our actual outfit, our trailer that we'd be using for these events, but I think we're pretty close to the point where we can go out and start publicizing the program, signing up volunteers, start working to give volunteer, or to get items donated for use in the program. So I think right now, kind of the emphasis would be on developing those contact lists for either volunteers or, or other organizations that might be able to donate time or materials for the program. I can try to answer any questions you might have.
I'd like to add to that. I submitted a list to Donna this evening of four businesses here in town that are willing to step up and, and help with this program. And I'd ask that maybe Donna can email everybody that list tomorrow, so we're not duplicating. You're not, you know, people aren't out there calling the same people over and over. So at least you'll get a list tomorrow, and then we can maybe go out and reach out to other people. Also, back to the name, I did a little research on name. A lot of cities and states and the word project kept coming up. Project Giving a Hand, Project Community United. So I think that word project may be something to hit on. The Kingman Project, the, you know, just that, I don't have a, I don't have an answer, I don't have a name for it yet, but project something or other. I mean, maybe that's a word we can kind of focus on and come up with a name for it.
Okay, well, if that's, yeah, we can definitely come up with some iterations of that for consideration.
These partial lists that we have here, these organizations that's already been contacted?
Yeah. Yeah. No, I believe that the service organizations have not been contacted yet. I believe that the list that Vice Chair Oberg furnished, I think that they have been.
They have been.
He has had some discussions with them, but the service organization list, I don't believe that we've had contact with them yet about this specifically, maybe in, you know, other projects in the past, I guess.
Any other comments, questions?
The brochure, are we just waiting for a name before we print or have a final copy, I guess?
Yeah, I mean, I think we're kind of at the, you know, the tying up the loose end stage right now. And, you know, I'd like to, once we go out and start talking about it, I'd like to be able to say, you know, when we're, when we'd be able to actually start doing some of these. And some of that's going to depend on our trailer and our equipment and those kinds of things. So, you know, maybe by next month, we'll have a timeline for consideration.
Just, you know, looking at the draft, maybe something like Project Community Service, Community Service Project. I don't know, it's just, I'm throwing things out there and that's what we need to come up with some.
Project X or something like that.
Okay, if there's nothing else, we'll be moving on to Old Business E, which is Adopt a Block Update. Discussion and possible action regarding the Adopt a Block Program.
Chair, Vice Chair, members of the Commission. So we do have two new participants, Kingman Kindness and Mojave Community College. Kingman Kindness Group scheduled their first cleanup for February 19th. We also, as a result of some of the Facebook posts that our Public Information Officer did, we were contacted by the minor and did an interview with them. And there's a, so they had an article in the paper about the Adopt a Block Program. And Donna's also included a list up to, up to date of who we, who we got signed up recently for the Adopt a Block Program. I don't know if Chairman Woods had anything else to report. Oh, I'm sorry, there is one other thing. Last month, someone had asked for a list of what parks and trails have been adopted. So that's also included in your, in your packet, that information's from the, from the Parks Department.
So the update on my end, I kind of wanted to wait after this meeting. So if we were going to be like doing any additional cleanups, I could reach out to my other contacts for the Adopt a Block when I was contacting these organizations to try to do a twofer. So for volunteers.
Sure.
So I'll be following up with quite a few of the original folks that when we first started the Adopt a Block, well, we didn't first start it, but we tried reviving it a little bit. So I should hopefully have more information for our next meeting.
Thank you.
I have one little thing. I was, I was approached by a church community and they're interested in the Adopt a Block Program. And they, they wanted to get more information as to where we need cleanups and scheduling of the cleanups. And so I thought I would get back with them and give them a, an application that they can fill out and any information that they, that they want on where and when and how. And I need to get with, I guess, you to find out who's all been contacted so I'm not re-contacting people and kind of, you know, bugging them when they've already been contacted. So there's a bunch of, like, people like Walmart and that sort of thing. I'd like to contact again and talk with them.
I believe Donna has all that information.
You got that list?
Yeah. The folks I was reaching out to, I passed along to her. And then she would send them a permit or the paperwork or more information for clarification. So the, the groups that were prior, that we originally, the list that we originally was working, you and I.
Mm-hmm.
So the responses I received, I forwarded those to her.
Okay.
And she reached out. But out of all those folks, some of the groups, they, they just didn't have enough people. So whenever we started doing our cleanups, they were interested in, in helping as just a volunteer instead of a whole Adopt a Block group.
Exactly. Especially on the day of caring.
Yeah.
That seemed to happen, yeah. I, I was trying to locate Boys and Girls Clubs here, not so much the Boys and Girls Club that we have here, but the Boy Scouts. And I couldn't get any information, so I talked with the Boys and Girls Club to see if they could give me information on how to contact the Boy Scouts. And it seems I have to go through Las Vegas. They have a list, that's the West Coast office, and they have a list. So I will do that this next week and see if I can get a list of Boy Scouts and Girl Scout offices that, because what I was looking for was older, you know, the, the 12 to 15 year olds that would be able to, to clean up in areas that are high traffic areas. And so we'll see what, see what comes of that, because they do give merit badges and maybe we can enlist them. That's all I've been doing.
And also, just to tag on the end of that, I know the academy also, there's public service that all of the ninth, 10th, 11th, 12th graders have to do in order to graduate. So, you know, I'm going to reach out to them as well.
Super.
To see if, you know, just to let them know that this is also an avenue where some of their kids can get some time.
Yeah, on that list, I didn't see the Lee Williams, I think it was the wrestling team. And I, when we contacted them, they were big in for it. They were still ready to go. So I might have to re-contact them and make sure that they're still with it and get them on the list.
You sent me an email or give me a call.
Okay. Good. Good. Okay. That's all I had.
Okay, moving on to letter F, Clean City Commission Schedule of Cleanups. Discussion and possible action regarding adding two additional cleanups per year to the Clean City Commission schedule and whether or not to change the annual April cleanup to a citywide cleanup.
So Chair, Vice Chair, members of the Commission, we've had some discussion. I've received some direction from the city manager to see if maybe the commission could take the lead on the, the spring, the April cleanup that in the past have been kind of done in conjunction with United Way. I believe that Commissioner Russell was going to try to contact the United Way to see what their status was. I, I haven't been able to do that.
I haven't, I haven't heard anything from him at all. I will try again. Their office isn't always attended, so I'll have to try again.
Okay. Well, if the commission would like to, we could put the citywide cleanup on the calendar for April 23rd. That would be a Saturday cleanup. That would be the week before the Arbor Day event. And, you know, if, if the commission would like to direct us to, to move forward with that, we can start planning for, for our usual area cleanup and maybe, you know, between this meeting and, and next month, try to do a little outreach, you know, we could do some outreach with the folks that we've got signed up for Adopt a Block and some of these other volunteer programs, see if we can't, you know, get some other folks out there with us, different parts of town that weekend to do some cleanup.
So I would entertain a motion?
I'd like to make a motion. Do we accept it?
I'm sorry. I, I missed the motion. I'm sorry.
I'd like to make a motion that we have, Rob, go ahead and schedule the cleanup for the 23rd.
I'll second that motion.
So we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. So next listed under Old Business is G, Clean City Commission Duties and Responsibilities. Discussion and possible action regarding the Clean City Commission's duties and responsibilities.
Chair, Vice Chair, and Commissioners, we talked about this some last month. The city, city attorney's taken on the project to kind of go through the city code and maybe standardize or try to standardize the commission roles and responsibilities that are listed in the city code. So as part of that, I thought it'd be a good opportunity, and I know that, you know, some of you have asked in the past to kind of go through what's identified as the roles and responsibilities of the commission. So we'd like to, you know, we're supplying you with what's, what's in the city code, which is, you know, the actual ordinance establishing the commission back in the 80s. And give you an opportunity, as we go, as the city attorney goes through this process, give you an opportunity maybe to go through and look at areas of emphasis, maybe some things that are listed there aren't really applicable anymore, maybe some things are more relevant today than they were in the 1980s. I can think of a lot of hair bands and such that are not that relevant today. But it's, it's an opportunity, I guess, for you to get a little bit of input on, on things you think are areas of emphasis that the commission should focus on and maybe clean up some of the older language in there. So I don't know if anybody has anything tonight, but, you know, as, hopefully you get a chance to read through this, you know, over the next month. And as things come to mind, please feel free to, you know, email me or Donna and we can start putting together a list that we can discuss at future meetings to see if we can come to some kind of consensus amongst the group of, you know, who we are and what we should be doing. So maybe we should set up, I guess, a priority of the things that we want to accomplish within our responsibilities. Some, some things be, some things we may not be interested in doing at all right now, but other things we may want to concentrate on and. Yeah, and you'll see, I mean, a lot of the language in the city code is kind of boilerplate language that's carried throughout every commission description. But, you know, it does get into some more detailed things on what the roles of the commission is, you know, what's expected of the commission. But yeah, if, you know, I don't know, I'm not sure the best way to go about it, but I, that's kind of what I was thinking. If, you know, if you could email me, just say, you know, this is an item that we should probably discuss. And so we can just start putting together a list and going through and organizing that. That way, we'll have something to kind of lead our discussion going forward rather than just kind of jumping throughout the city code.
Item number four on this, responsibilities, I don't quite follow the way it's written, especially the last, the last of it. Encourage understanding of the importance of recycling to the overall system of waste management, from education to provision of opportunities to recycle, to purchase, to the purchase of recycled materials. The city purchasing or finding buyers to purchase our recycled materials if we ever get to where we can recycle again.
Yeah.
That is.
Yeah, and that's, that's something we'll have to clarify, I guess, to start with is some of, some of this stuff that, like, this, this item that you have is, is not exactly the same as what's in the city code.
Gotcha.
In the city code is kind of, like, say, that's the ordinance governing the commission. Some of these may have come out of, I don't know if you, a long time ago, you know, we did the kind of this planning session with the council and all the commissions. And some of this might have been generated out of that. I'd have to go back and check. But it was a kind of an all-day event and all the commissions met with the council and kind of each commission was supposed, I think you and I were going to.
Yeah, right, exactly, yeah.
Were supposed to come up with a list of goals, I guess, or emphasis. So, you know, that wasn't necessarily codified into the city code. So I think, you know, this would be an opportunity to codify some of these items into the city code. But, yeah, I think that's kind of what.
Okay.
What we'd have to, the way we ought to look at going.
So Rob, you said, give us a month to look, look through this and see what we may want to add to the city ordinance or the city code. So that's why we were just taking a look at this list, which is on the website for the public to see.
Yeah.
And encompass some of this into the city code. So are you looking for us to say, we'd love to have number one, two, and three added to the actual city code? And then you're going to take it to the city attorney or?
Well, I think.
Why, why are we discussing this? Or how do we want us to move forward?
Well, I just think, you know, there are going to be changes made to the city code governing commissions. And I thought it'd be good for the commission to have input into that process. So whether it's, you know, whether it's codifying some of these, or if you're just looking through what's actually in the city code and saying, you know, what's this mean? You know, that's a good question and we should probably talk about it. You know, if you don't know what it means and I don't know what it means, then that's probably something we need to take care of.
So, go ahead, I'm sorry, Rob.
No, I'm sorry, I, I think this is part of it.
So if we're talking about discussing, I'll just talk about number four, recommend enforcement additional program alternatives. A couple of months ago, when Lieutenant Bryce was here, Mr. Russell asked him about transient and the trash they leave behind, et cetera. Didn't give us an answer, but he did email me back a couple of weeks later. And he took it up with the chief, and the chief directed him to tell us to go to Detective, I mean, Chief Freed and Lieutenant Zach if we want the answer on that. And the way I kind of interpreted the email was, why is the Clean City Commission even bringing that up? Well, Mr. Russell brought it up because every time they leave all their trash behind, you go through the shopping centers, they're digging through trash cans, they don't pick it back up and put it back in after they find what they want. So I think Mr. Russell brought that up to Lieutenant Bryce to actually get the answer for that. And just to let you know, Mr. Russell, we didn't get the answer.
I know that.
We got pushed off to Lieutenant Zach and Chief Freed. So I don't know if that's something this commission wants to continue pursuing, or we asked Rob to maybe check into that for us, or if we just.
Well, and I really can't speak to any of that because I wasn't part of that conversation.
Right.
Enforcement is going to be important, but I don't know if the Clean City Commission is in a position to really do a whole lot about that.
I agree. I agree with that.
Yeah, I mean, code enforcement's a whole, whole different animal. And there's all kinds of state statutes governing how.
That's.
Codes and ordinances are enforced. And it's, it's not so much a matter of will as to figuring out how.
Exactly.
And being patient to get where you need to get.
Is there anything that the Clean City Commission can ask or do to try to clean up the mess that's left behind, you know, at the intersections and things like that? I mean.
Well, like I say, I'm, I'm open. You know, I think as you, as you go through all this material, please feel free to email me any questions or topics that you, you know, you think are, are something that would be within. any questions or topics that you, you know, you think are something that would be within the Commission's purview to discuss and look at codifying into the city code.
And that's why I thought we should look into maybe number four and maybe even have Lieutenant Zach come and discuss it with us.
I'm not sure what number four you're referring.
Number four on the actual city code. Recommend enforcement and additional program alternatives. So if we're getting a lot of trash and stuff left behind, then you call code enforcement, and obviously code enforcement's already said, it's not their department, it's Lieutenant Zach's department. So that's why I'm saying, do we want to move forward and get some discussion going with Lieutenant Zach?
Well...
Or do we want to just...
I mean, we can talk, you know, all of this is open for discussion, I guess, as far as, you know, how the laws work and how enforcement ordinances work. You know, I defer to the Police Department on those because that's what they do, you know. But, yeah, we can talk about any of this.
And then one more question. Is this a situation where maybe Kealan and I could contact Lieutenant Zach and sit down with him and discuss the transient again and the trash that's left behind? And just so maybe we can, as a Clean City Commission, report what the City's doing to combat that?
Well, I don't want to volunteer, Mr. Arbro.
I'd like to, no.
I think that's something we could discuss.
Okay.
I have a comment, I guess. On, so the Clean City Commission shall recommend refuse and environmental management policies to the City Council for all city refuse and Clean City activities. The Clean City activities may follow a common purpose. And we should have the following responsibilities. Develop a citywide refuse and environmental policy plan, excluding, obviously, the financial part of it. I don't think we've ever, as a Commission, I don't think we've ever discussed any environmental policies and stuff like that.
No, yeah, I wouldn't disagree with you, I think. But even, you know, before we inherited the Commission, I don't think that, you know, annual report and all, that was a common practice with them. I think we tried to keep the Commission involved when we gone through, you know, the changes that we had to make to the recycling program. When we've gone through the solid waste rate study, I think we've tried to keep the Commission informed of that, you know.
So what if we disagree with some of the policies and plan? How long do we got to wait to say anything or try to change it?
Well, I think, you know, I mean, this, what happens with solid waste is that, you know, it has to pay its own way. So, you know, we've got a bottom line that we've got to meet and figure out how to pay for it. And that's kind of what happens with recycling. When we asked folks if they wanted to, you know, figured out what we could do for, you know, a minimal recycling program, it had a pretty reasonable cost. And, you know, did a survey of all of our customers, and overwhelming response was no, that they didn't want to pay for recycling. So, I mean, again, we can, like I say, we're just starting the process. And we could talk about any of this, but, you know, if you want to, I think it'd be best if you could, you know, send me items that you wanted to discuss, and we could get them into a list and try to knock down bullet points on those and knock them out over the next few months on, you know, areas that you want to emphasize the Commission's activities on.
With regards to the enforcement and additional program alternatives. The problem, I don't know how the City is so much, but I'm sure it's probably similar with the enforcement of the, say, the anti-dumping laws and rules, stuff like that. When somebody does get cited for illegal dumping and stuff like that, I know with the county going to the court system, it's, they get more punishment out of them if they do a felony dumping, but only charging them with a misdemeanor because it's less work and it doesn't, when they take a felony citation to the court, they almost always downgrade it to a misdemeanor anyway. So it's all that additional work to process the felony, and they're only getting a misdemeanor punishment anyway. So does the City have that same problem? Is there much of that at all happening?
Well, I think in general, I don't think we have the magnitude of wildcat dumping that the county does. You know, we do in certain areas, you'll see it out on, you know, at airway or certain areas within the city limits. But, you know, generally in the developed areas of the city, we don't have the same issue with wildcat dumping that the county does. When it comes to how offenses are charged, you know, I'm not in law enforcement or the court system. So, you know, I, again, I would have to defer to their, you know, to their procedures for doing that. You know, I know that, you know, we do a lot, probably in the city, we do a lot more, you know, nuisance abatement processing than we do wildcat dump, wildcat dumping prosecutions. And those are, that process for nuisance abatement, you know, so someone has a nuisance on their property, you know, junk car or something, those property, you know, the process is pretty well-defined in state statute of what we can and can't do, and what timeframes are built into that.
What would be the possibility of getting one of the City Judges to come in and discuss what they're, what you're on illegal dumping and stuff is?
Yeah, well, I don't know how much, the municipal court, I don't know how much of that ends up in the municipal court, you know, or how much of it ends up in the county court. You know, we could reach out to the City Attorney and see if we could schedule something on that.
Because I know with the, with the other judges, some of them, one of them in 26 years was the first illegal dumping case that he had of his whole time sitting on the bench, a couple of years ago. And I think that was Superior Court, but the, whatever the other lower court in the county of, they're probably see more, but I don't think their punishment is near what it is. And then people, you can also be charged for dumping. Say if you dumped in the county, you could be charged under a state law instead of the county code because in some cases, the punishment is more extensive by process than the state has opposed to the county.
We're kind of getting off of the subject here a little bit, I think.
On the enforcement and additional program alternatives.
Clean City, Clean City responsibilities is what, you know, that's something that we really don't, can't get involved.
Refuse and environmental policy, as far as I can understand it.
I'll add to that real quick. And when Lieutenant Bryce was here, he did touch base on that. He said everything was a misdemeanor citywide when they either, like Rob said, they don't get too much wildcat dumping, but most of it's just a code enforcement situation, and it is a misdemeanor, and they do take it before the Attorney General, I mean, the City Attorney. Anyway, just to add that to you.
I have a question, statement question. So under number five, where it's talking about an annual report to the Common Council, do you make, or does someone prepare an annual report on our behalf?
As far as I know, the Clean City Commission never has prepared an annual report for the Council. We do department reports, and we do, you know, we've done solid waste reports for the Council. And throughout the year, we'll do different department or division reports for the Council. But we've never produced that annual report.
So would you have, or Donna, have a list of, like, our Adopt-A-Block, or not maybe Adopt-A-Block, but for our cleanings, like, that we, last year, we picked up however many tons of whatever, just during our, so you would have that information, but you don't submit that to anybody?
When we do the Adopt-A-Block one or the Adopt-A-Highway ones through A-DOT, we submit that to them.
To them?
Yeah.
But not to our, like, City Council or?
No, we haven't been, but that's something we could do.
That's all I had. Commissioners, any other comments, questions, debates?
Just a reminder, I guess, yeah, please, I think it would help the discussion going forward if you could submit items to me that you'd like to talk about, and we can flesh those out a little bit, a little bit more organized manner.
Okay. Moving on down to announcements by Commission members, number five. So this is limited to announcements, availability, attendance at conferences and seminars, requests for agenda items for future meetings. So we will start down here with Commissioner Case.
I have nothing tonight.
Thank you, Commissioner Arbro. Commissioner Hollins?
The only thing I have, I'll probably attend by Zoom meeting next, for the next meeting if I'm, I'll, we'll be out of the area whether I'll have communication capabilities, that's to be seen. But I plan on at least getting high in the elevation so I can get some signal, so.
Okay, Commissioner Case?
Carpenter.
Carpenter, sorry.
I have nothing.
Case, Carpenter, and...
I have, I have nothing either this month.
Okay, so I have just a couple of things. So just as an FYI, the Mojave County Fairgrounds is having an event in May. And according to the Parks Administrator, Kristin Zimmerman, they will be accepting tires in May from the public there at the fairgrounds, as long as they're not on the rims, and there's no limit. And she instructed me that they'll be sending out a press release once it gets closer to the time for their event. So I'm assuming has something they're going to be needing tires for. And then, just to piggyback on the back of that, so you can, all Mojave County residents can dispose of five free tires a year at the Mojave County landfill. And that's five tires per driver's license, so that's just a little thing to throw out there. And then I also got an email about they are doing the residential household hazard waste collection, and that's going to be on Sunday, April 10th, and from eight to one at the old Public Works Building area, 3675 Andy. So I just wanted to throw that out there. Other than that, I'm apologizing because I didn't do the call to order. But, so maybe I should do it once, or maybe I'll do it twice next time, but anyways, so that's all I have.
Well, my announcement was, I thought you did pretty well for your first...
Thanks. And so the last is adjournment.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I second that motion.
Okay, motion and a second. All those in favor of?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Any opposed? Motion passes. Oh, there we go.